We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and be so inclined, join us in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any additions, changes, sub fractions, anything on the order?
I do have one donation that I'll kind of explain when we get to that part, when we get to the consent agenda.
You can fill at that time.
Oh, I do have an item that, a donation, can as well add it as a line item then.
Yeah, let's, you have no timetable here, we can just add it as number 10.
Depending on how long the meeting is, a discussion on board members applying for positions.
Like coaching positions?
Yeah. Oh, almost any position really is an active board member. Just a discussion. Whether it be tonight or you want to put on another meeting, that's fine. It's not a big rush.
Let's, let's see where we go. If we got time, we can, I suppose we need to officially add it, but we can just use our time. Okay, so other than the donation and the potential other discussion item, could I hear a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. No scheduled presenters this evening, so we'll hop right down to school board representation report.
Alright, so, right now, we're doing lots of stuff around school. Right now, there is the winter play, the play that's going on Bye Bye Birdie, and that's, as far as I can tell, is going really well. Student council, we're starting to work on our Giving Tree stuff again, where we're gonna try and gather clothes, toys, and et cetera for the holidays for the kids. BPA's doing a coat drive, and we're transitioning over to winter sports, so wrestling, dance, all this stuff's starting up, and about it, right now.
Kind of an in-between time, isn't it?
Yeah, everything's starting up and everything's ending, so.
Is this your first time flying solo with me?
Yeah.
And your name is?
We're glad to have you here.
Andrew.
For the camera.
Andrew, there's.
Good to have you here.
Thank you.
School board committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause?
Facility's met a week ago or so. Part of the discussion was the John Birch Park field. The, it's time to possibly address the usage of the back football field.
That's a discussion item tonight, too.
Alright. Little bit on tennis courts, what direction are you gonna go there with the tennis courts, as far as bringing those back up to playable standards. It's been an issue for the last couple of years. Also, we'll get more into the back of the school.
Yep.
As we get into the discussion portion of the toward the end of the program. But, the other thing is, that we discussed is PM and the new equipment, preventive maintenance on new equipment for both, for actually all three buildings. But, during the way, we'll, we'll be able to work that into the budget in the upcoming years, but if we're gonna make the investment, I guess it's, in my opinion, that we keep a hand on the preventative maintenance and not let it go the way that it can past years, which is never changing filters or belts unless they're completely plugged or gone or broke. So, anything else I'm missing?
A little bit on the well, but that's out here tonight, too.
Yep, okay.
And the PM, we have built in some for preventive maintenance.
We have. We were just kind of waiting to get those final numbers on, and you guys will get that when you get the whole budget. You know, we're looking at about forty thousand dollars a year to make sure that all the buildings work the way they should and to keep that up. It's, it's been good to learn a lot about that process, but obviously keeping that up is gonna be a number one priority. So, when we get those numbers kind of finalized, we'll bring that back to the board, but those were the numbers we saw at the, the meeting.
Yep. And I, I think, I think they'll be a bit more than we saw at the meeting. He actually said it was on the high side, which after we took a look at it, some of his, he was recommending on the high side as far as how often we wanna do preventive maintenance on it. So, I think we can take a little bit of that off, which the costs will come down some. So, it'll be under forty.
What's really nice about this process is SSC, we pay to belong to their membership, and so they can vet out some of these processes for us. Not everyone is gonna wanna do preventative maintenance here because it's Cana Falls and they would have to drive here to do that, so it doesn't make it feasible for them. But, I like that we go through them because then we get the best bang for the buck, and companies that really wanna be invested in keeping our, our buildings running the way they should, so we'll keep you posted on that, too.
My people partner with SARM in schools that they're gonna do the same, PMs on other ones.
And that's why it's nice to go through SSC to do that.
Work experience wise, being, this is a lot of what I do in my day life. A lot of districts don't like to combine, and the reason being is, you might have, be in charge of a school district, and I might be in charge of a smaller school district, or you do more in your school district than I do in mine. So, they don't like how they, they, they like to see the, the dollar amount be lower as a group. However, if you're getting a lot more services than I am, I, I can't tell you why they, they don't really care to get involved in a qualified school situation, but I've been, and I've dealt with it a couple different times, and in the end, everybody just decided to go on their own and stay with either whomever they had.
Right. Yeah, I didn't know if the trip charges would be.
It won't make a difference. With contractors nowadays, the trip charge is a trip charge is a trip charge, right? So, if I'm coming here and throwing out the same aid, guess what? We're gonna pay a trip charge here, and they're gonna get charged a trip charge. That's kind of how that works, and, so, that answers your question.
Yeah. It was a thought.
Yeah, no, I.
But thought.
Yep. Went down that road of, in southern Minnesota, the schools. There's five schools that I was just in that same conversation with. So, alright, that's it for me.
We'll, we'll discuss at least the football and maybe more power to the tennis, just within that report. Any other committee reports that you would want to share? We're having finance next week, aren't we?
Monday, March 1st.
Anything for you?
The Ed Foundation has Give, Give Minnesota November 17th at the Winery fundraiser.
Okay.
Date of the staff development committee. I'm not getting those emails, I don't think.
Let me check on that. They are meeting less than they were before, but I will check on that for you.
Administrative reports. Elementary school. Derek, anything for us?
No, not really. Everything's just running great down there.
Well, why machine?
Middle school, high school. Who wants to take that over, Kim?
Uh, I guess I will. Things are going well. We just transitioned from first quarter to second quarter. Report cards, we're handing them out to kids during the day, so that affects high school and sixth grade. Seventh and eighth grade are still on trimesters, so they've got a few weeks left before the end of the trimester. That ends right after Thanksgiving. Couple of things, I signed the school up for, there, there is this, I don't know if it's a company, I don't know the right word for it, but it's called raise.me. Did you get that email?
Yeah, I'm Peter McTatum, signed up with my name.
Awesome. So, raise.me is an organization that partners with higher ed institutions, and they provide micro scholarships. So, for example, a student like Andrew, who is, you know, a 4.0 student, he, if he's going to the U of M, and he puts in that I gotta A in math, and I gotta A in English, and I gotta A in social studies and science, the U would guarantee him a certain amount of money for each of those things. He might get a certain amount of money for playing football, he might get a certain amount of money for being on student council, he might get a certain amount of money by being the student rep on the school board. And then, if he's accepted and he chooses to attend one of the institutions, the partners with raise.me, then he's guaranteed a certain amount of scholarship money. So, a great opportunity for our students, and they can start earning those micro scholarships as soon as their freshman year. So, I sent that email out to all of the high school kids last week, and said, you know, sign up, you know, even if you think you might wanna go to Luther, or you think you might wanna go to U, or, or one of the other places, if you're in there, it's a good chance for them to earn a little bit extra money for that. So, we got a lot of kind of interesting things going on right now. Staff development is looking at some good opportunities for not, for this following summer, and, and do some interesting things throughout the school year, too. So, I think things are going really well.
Okay, thank you. Community ed activities. Jake?
Couple of things that Andrew mentioned. Fall sports wrapped up, everything's done now, and winter sports, you're getting going. Girls' basketball started today, and if you looked at last year's roster of girls in grades eight through twelve, we had ten girls out for basketball. They've got three girls that graduated, one transferred, so we had six eligible to come back. We had twelve girls come out for basketball today in the high school level, so Coach McCamey got at least six new girls to come out that I don't know if they had played before, last year anyways. And the junior high numbers are really good. Twenty-six girls are now in seventh and eighth grade, so, but, and hopefully that program gets turned around with those numbers. Congratulations to Sophie Upsher in the state cross country meet for the second year in a row. She finished seventieth. I might have a feel of like a hundred and fifty or something like that, so. And congratulations to the football team. Andrew's a member of that. They, they lost in the section championship game to Rochester Loris, who was playing in the state semifinals this weekend. And Coach Housat, that was his third section championship game. He's coached them in the six years, and before Housat, I think this school's only played in one section championship in history, so Housat's had a good run there. Rested boys' basketball will start next Wednesday, or next Monday, excuse me, so.
No technology reports. We'll pop down to the suits report.
Yeah, I've got some of the things in here. Just try to mark your calendars for February 4th. I, I always attend, and I'll be presenting actually this year again at the legislative forum. It's gonna be a really interesting switch with the senate going to the Republican side. It's gonna take all of us to make sure that some money gets put on that formula, and I'm not sure it's gonna happen this year, but if you aren't able to make it, I will certainly bring back an update. Wastito is going to kill me, for sure. We are running into some issues that Mr. Steven Aller and I, both are working with Jim Burkart on as well, some titling issues. They don't seem overly worried about it, but we are unable to finish the sale at this time, so I guess I just have to trust them and know that it's, it's gonna be okay. One of the things that the, the other gentleman didn't mention was National Honor Society. We had thirteen new members into National Honor Society, so that's always a great thing. World's Best Workforce, I'm not gonna read through this, but again, kind of a big, big thing that's on my desk right now is the World's Best Workforce and some of the elements that go into that. So, I guess that's, that's the main things that I had for tonight. I did send a, I attended the MREA conference this weekend, and into today, I just got home right before the meeting, and sent some good notes, I think, out to the principals and things like that. Had breakout sessions on teacher shortages and what's that's gonna mean for negotiations coming up, transgender, and what that can impact the schools. We have several schools, very small schools in the area that are working through some, you know, transgender students coming into their district and things like that. So, really, really a great conference that I learned a lot at, so hopefully at admin tomorrow, I can share the rest of my information with the admin team and, and move forward. But, I think it's a good enough concert, or conference that I would recommend maybe to a couple reps from this committee going up next year. It's very good. That's all.
Rob, do you have any comments based on your experience in real estate with Wastito?
You know, it's, it's a hiccup. It really is. It's, the title issue we have is the current owner's not Independent School District 252. It's Consolidated District 6, which nobody knows exists. So, they have to quiet that title and get that interest off of the title and put Independent School District 252 on it, and then they can sell it. The way Jim Burkart's talking, and the way it's looking so far, it actually is better if you can't find anything related to that district. If you can't, you'll advertise. If nobody steps forward, then they'll take it to the courts and they'll quiet that title. If somebody comes forward and says, yeah, I represent Consolidated School District 6, now you have to work through that person to, to resolve it. So, no news is actually better in this case, that no one comes forward to claim rights to the property.
Goodhue just went through it, Natlango as well, so I guess it is more common than one might think, but.
It is. Yeah, especially when you go to something that's not traded hands a lot, but may have just shifted ownership. We may still close this week. I know, scheduled was first of December. We're trying to close this Friday, and if Jim feels comfortable, he'll close over that title issue and then just resolve that next month.
That's decidedly more optimistic than you.
You know, what you have is buyers and sellers who wanna get the deal done. Typically, it will get done.
Yeah, and I think that's me. I just really want it done. I just thought if we sold it, it would be done, and.
If you had a buyer that was like, ooh, I don't like this, you couldn't have a problem. If you had a seller that was like, I don't wanna pay for this, yeah, but right now, you've got both buyers, so I don't wanna do it.
Okay. Thank you. Public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward the individual district during public input. Individual complaints or concerns should be handled privately with the administrators and/or the superintendents. Comments from visitors may be informational in nature, and not to exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate. Those three to five minutes will take the information and find the answers, if that is appropriate. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at the public board meeting. Having said all of that, does anyone wish to speak to the board about any concerns related to the district? Moving on. Action items. Old business we have none, new business. Consideration to approve the resolution canvassing the returns of votes of the school district general and special election.
Did she give you all the numbers? Sorry, did you get played on?
Yep, they're attached in your package, and the official return that needs to be signed by all board members is with Brenda.
Okay, we need a motion, the second to approve the resolution first, I believe.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Rob. Okay, would you like to read your resolution, ma'am?
What page is that on?
Five.
Sorry. Okay, this is, for the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general and special election. How much do I read?
Probably nothing. The totals are on page eight and nine.
Eight and nine. Okay, so for school board members, for the four-year term, did I read this?
Can I go down?
The number of votes, too. Jerry already, twenty, two thousand five hundred fifty-nine. Katie Lackner, two thousand four hundred sixty-three. Bob Britmell, four hundred forty-three. And Nell Swann, one thousand five hundred thirty-five. Six to the right end. And for the two-year, they can see, round out once, three thousand four hundred ninety-two and thirty-six right ends.
Good.
Okay, let me do a roll call.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Brenda. Yes, and Rob.
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero.
Miss Andrew wants to vote.
It's your opportunity. Why not? Number two. Consideration to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion?
Okay, the vote on the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And Kurt?
That one's a confusion once we just move on. And congratulations to all.
That's five-zero.
Okay, consideration to approve a student fundraiser, bagging at Econo Foods.
Yeah, anytime it isn't on your original list, they have to bring it in. Jake, do you wanna go through this one, or do you want me to do it?
You take this.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do this.
Yeah, that's okay. We had someone come in kind of late. It was, they, what they do for the senior party is they list that they're gonna do several different activities. We just wanna make sure that you understand that. Grocery bagging will be one of their activities, and they would like to get that approved since it wasn't on the, the main list. They're not doing any more. We're just specifically telling you what, what they're doing.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the fundraiser. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
Is this senior class that's doing this, or junior, or?
Well, it's a junior class, but it's for the senior party.
Right, right.
Okay.
Oh, did I say senior?
Well, yeah, we weren't sure, but it was, it was for the seniors.
Andrew needs a party.
I didn't know.
Did you do this last year?
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving a fundraiser, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the seventh grade girls' basketball coach.
Ed, remember last month, we hadn't filled this position yet. Melissa Duke set the step up and, and has taken on the seventh grade girls' basketball position. We have many people interested in it, but it just didn't quite seem to work out for anybody's schedule, and Melissa stepped up and she will take the seventh period this year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Melissa?
I'll make a motion to approve Melissa.
I'll second her.
Rob and Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve a student fundraiser, coaches versus cancer to be held on January 10th next year.
Yeah, sometimes when you transfer coaches, they wanna do different fundraisers than maybe that have done, been done in the past. And so, this is just an example of the varsity coach, Sam, coming in and wanting to do something kind of neat, and it's made coaches and athletes kind of against, they're, they're wearing t-shirts. It sounds like it's gonna be just a really, really neat fundraiser for the kids.
And it's a charity, too, so it's not, it's not for their, their program. It's, it's all it goes to charity.
Yep, one hundred percent of it.
It's a national movement, huh?
Yeah, I'll second.
That's a good idea. I'll make a motion.
Brenda, I heard you. Brenda made the motion.
I'll second.
Jerry, seconded.
Maybe you're, you're the cherry.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to seek quotes for tennis court resurfacing with co-op buying through the SSC.
Well, both Jerry and I can talk about this. We decided after we sold Wastito, everyone fully understands that anytime you sell property, it has to be put back into facilities. We can't save that money and use it towards negotiations, or, or plant trees up front, or, you know, something that we've been wanting to do. It has to really be a facility-type thing. And so, the priority list has been kind of started, but right off the bat, was tennis courts. We've talked about this for several years. Tennis courts are supposed to last about seven years, and ours are almost at thirteen. So, Jake has done just a fabulous job of getting company, or other schools to come in and actually use our tennis courts, so we are renting them on a pretty regular basis. We do have a very active community that also uses them. But, after facilities and our, you know, just kind of looking over them, it would be my recommendation to move forward with at least the bidding process to see where we're at. We had that bid done, and it's two years old already. I called both companies that were willing to do it, and they, you know, they can't, they'd have to rebid it. Remember that we do have the landscaping in front of it that has all been taken down, so, you know, it's about seven thousand dollars, that'll be off that. The retaining wall has been removed, so that will help. They think they'll be able to reuse some of the poles, but the resurfacing is what needs to be done.
This is something that would be in next year's budget? Is that what we're thinking?
It is. I'd like to use the Wastito money towards this. Because we have to, with estates, anytime you sell a property like that, I have to say exactly where that money went. I can't just put it in the general account and.
Don't have to spread it right away, but whatever it's for.
No, it just has to be designated towards facilities, but this is just something we've talked about for so long. I'd like to at least go towards the bidding process. It's a fall sport, so it'd be nice to have it done in the spring or the summer when we're not here, those kinds of things, so.
It's so much use in the summertime with, with taxpayers and the community. It'd be nice to get it done earlier.
Didn't Dave say there had to be a certain temperature? It has to be the ground. I don't remember what it was, but there was a certain temperature. They won't do it prior to that, but.
No, when we're talking resurfacing, we talking ripping up, we're just putting a new coat over everything.
Resurface means just the coat on the top.
They're gonna have to fix some of the poles that are coming out or sinking.
Right.
There's been some significant settling, hasn't there?
Well, that's why I was wondering if the resurfacing, and, and I don't know, I, I've looked at them and stuff, but should it be a resurfacing, or should be a re-bid?
Well, that's what we need these companies, I guess, to come, I mean, we shouldn't use the word resurfacing, but we need them to come back out. We fixed the retaining wall part that they kept saying was doing more damage, so we've, you know, removed that. So, we need them to come back out and, and give us a, some estimates of what needs to be done. And again, we'll use SSC for that, too. That way, we go through the proper bidding process, so.
Right. So, it might not just be a resurfacing, but it's one option.
That is correct. I know the one end needs to be fixed or raised or something, yeah.
Yeah, we saw that, we're appalled.
I'll make a motion to seek votes for the tennis court resurfacing.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Next item, discussion on football fields. Who wants to carry the ball on this? Jerry?
Not me.
Hey, that was a pretty good pun. I really didn't mean that.
Well, who's gonna fumble though?
Jake or Jerry?
Jake?
Well, you know, it's something that's kind of been talked about in the background for a few years now, and after a couple playoff games in the rain, it really did a lot of damage to, to the baseball field, to that outfield, and there's some, also some other upkeep things that need to be done down there. The scoreboard should probably be replaced. The curls nest should be replaced. I think it's maybe just time to look at it with, with soccer, with more kids playing soccer, and there's a push to get all soccer games played in a stadium setting. You know, we don't even have bleachers down there. We don't have, you know, rainwater and, you know, out there either, so, you know, if we look at doing something to improve the football field back there, we can potentially play football games back there. Either all our football games back there, or getting many of our games back there, and then soccer as well, too, so, you know, you have to look at a few different things if you wanted to play hockey back there, but.
Could you be specific, Jake, as to where you're thinking of everything being played in that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, the football field we're talking to is the inside of the track, which is really the only football field we have. You know, we, we made one down at the elementary school, so.
One of the options that was discussed was, do we wanna go to turf field? And it raises a lot of eyebrows on what it may or may not cost. The flip side of that is, I think people would be surprised at the cost of maintenance and watering for that portion of the, of the grounds. The watering bill alone is thirty thousand, is that what Dave said? Just to water the field? And it's seconded here, it's just about this.
Hold back there.
Hold back there.
Still not.
How feasible or unfeasible is that? At this point, we don't know. That's just one of the items that was thrown out there. We have no idea what it would cost to facilitate something like that. I don't know if it's two million dollars, is it three million dollars? It's, it's gonna be, it's a spending price tag, but what would be the payback on it? I don't know. At this point, no one really has any idea, but it's just something to throw out there. John Birch, after the, like Jake said, the last couple playoff games, it was, the field was demolished. I don't know if it surfaces even to be playable for baseball, at least for this, for the school baseball. So, and, and I know it's something that's been kind of kicked around. I know, Rob, you brought up in the past, why don't we just put lights out back and have our football games up here instead of the downtown? And that's something that you've talked about six years ago when you got a school board. So, that's, that's another option, that it would open up more field space for all the sports when they have a contest. The soccer teams won't necessarily have to play a full varsity game and a half a JV game because of darkness.
You're saying they could play back there?
Everything could be played back there.
Just out of curiosity, where, where do they, if soccer's going, then where do they play, practice for football and all that?
I think it would probably on the soccer field.
In size there, okay.
You know, there is one, I think it's fifty-yard practice football field out here.
Right out to the side.
I have probably not enough for varsity and JV. Probably not enough for varsity and JV football teams, so maybe go to the elementary school. Because it'd be at least twice a week where there'd be a soccer game out there at least.
Girls and boys. Then you have JV football, then you have varsity football, so.
Plus, yeah, junior high team plays on that field.
I think the biggest thing that kind of started all of this was, you know, the crow's nest is really in bad shape at John Birch. Well, who should be responsible for fixing that? Who should be putting, you know, things up on that? We've got a brand new, state of the art one in the backfield that's not being used, you know, money into scoreboards. Well, does that make any sense when there's a brand new scoreboard, you know, those kinds of things? So that's where it started from. I know at the facility meeting, what we decided and we're hopeful that the board would agree on is having Jake kind of spearhead a subcommittee of sorts. I don't think this should be necessarily facility. You know, it should be community members that are kind of stakeholders in the process. And, you know, whether that's a couple athletes, we talked about that too, just having having that subcommittee, you know, kind of go through the pros and the cons. Because this is not an easy thing and there's so much tradition in this town with everything the way it is now. We just, there's possibility, you know, lighting and things like that. You know, we've got sponsors that might buy that. Well, those are only $100,000, you know, to do some of the other things are really, really big expense, so. So with that said, I think, you know, that what we want to do here is let you know that Jake is gonna be kind of, well, Jake and Dave, I know you're both gonna be kind of the spear holders, right?
Yeah.
And so they'll be moving forward because it's gonna be really important that Jake and Dave work really closely on this and kind of move forward. And then the companies will come in like UNESCO and kind of give you a option one, two, three, and four, and maybe you don't want to go with any of those. But at least like with UNESCO, which, how much do you want to do? Do you want to include the CCC or the elementary, things like that? So I thought it was a really good meeting. You were there too, Bob. It seemed like it was a productive meeting.
Yeah, and you know, so I would say the people who have vested interest would be the Bears, the people that.
The city.
Finance, finance, do a lot of the own fundraising and finance for John Birch Park. Bucky with the Cannon Falls baseball program.
Hosted.
Hosted, youth football, of course, community ethic, they use a lot of the John Birch Park. And even in the summer, a lot of stuff could get moved up here possibly too, so. I think that's the route that we're looking to go, so I would I would guess there's probably gonna be six, seven, eight people possibly as far as community to.
Get to 10 pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Just about looking for people in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Coming from a player's perspective too, like Beth had talked about, there is that tradition of every single home game, we have tradition of the bus ride to John Birch. We have, you know, it just, everyone loves playing at John Birch. I mean, you know, we love that field. And the thing is, we know, we really ruined it after those wet games. And we know as players, we would do what we need to do to make that field better. We go down there, we paint. We go down there every weekend after spaghetti, we paint it. We'd be willing to help with the grass. And I know guys who are working on John Birch personally, and it's coming on a lot better than we could have expected. And then again, with the practice field thing too, that's a really rough field. I mean, in the, in the middle of the field is, comes to a really high triangle. And I know that's for helping water run down, but you couldn't play on that, a really good game. And it gets destroyed by us. And that 50 yard field, like Jake said, it's not much. And walking up to elementary, that's a real big pain for a player to enjoy every day.
You know, the traditional, the traditional conversation stems from the length of time it's been that we've used John Birch Park. But even in the last dozen years, it's gone from being a high school football field in addition to baseball to be used by youth, to be used by junior high, JV. And there's probably three, four times the use that there's been. And I think it's time that we seriously discuss moving it here. I mean, even the halftime discussions, I don't know where you go for halftime. It used to be in the.
Yeah, we're gonna see it again. That's another part, like the tradition, we go sit on the hill every game and we high five all the young kids as we run by, you know?
We love that.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna run into issues where, because we don't even have a locker room or safety, you know, if a tornado was to come in or anything like that. There's just so many factors that it's at least worth talking about, especially when we have a facility behind the school that could be pretty amazing. I mean, obviously that crowning is pretty severe. I can, when I can't see over the other side, you know, it's it's something, but but it's worth at least looking at, you know, at least.
I agree.
Exciting for track and field too, to be able to not have a timeframe and get done at 7:30. It would kind of expand their use as well, I'm sure.
Just think about the state athletes we've had in track and cross country and all those things. And yet we have trouble hosting meets because we don't have lights. They have to race through events and, you know, like one of you had talked to me about soccer meetings, you know, just kind of racing through. And sometimes you get through them, but sometimes you don't before the sun goes down, so. We would just like to move forward and have Dave and Jake work with this committee. I'll obviously sit on it as well, but have them kind of, it can't hurt to have the conversation.
Is, is there a way, I mean, I'm on board. I, Jerry, you know, I, I don't have the tradition that everybody else has here. I think this is the better, better location parking wise, facilities wise. We've got that nice stadium. We got everything out there already. It's just not being used. But a game plan, that's a pun. Because we're talking, there's more games out than there ever have been. So we turf that, you know, what would the schedule look like? What would all of our green space look like, you know, and would it still work? Is that gonna be enough? You know, we ran into basketball court issues and we didn't have a field house seven years ago and it's like, wow. And so I'm curious how this would look on paper with all the different games that are to be played. What would be the right answer for that? Because if we decide grass, could it support or do we need to go to something like turf? To even support the amount of play that we would on a regular basis see?
I don't think you could play boys and girls' soccer and football on there. Because it could be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday to be used. I mean, not always, but quite often maybe get them.
And to give an idea, what it look on paper, we could talk to Triton or one of the smaller districts that have all the sports that we have offer. I think Pine Allen is talking about their, visiting this topic, I believe.
Byron is too, I think.
Byron is going turf. Triton, Dover Yoda, Cassin.
And it's not necessarily, we're just trying to keep up with the neighbors because it's really not at all. It's more necessity.
But we would lose a place to practice, wouldn't we? Or would we have more practice out there just the same, practice five days a week out there?
Well, I think that's part of this whole plan.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't want them to start working on it unless you guys sounded like you were at least a goal.
You would need practice, you would need practice space because a soccer game's gonna be at 5 o'clock and they're gonna at least start warming up at 4:00 and football camp starts somewhere. Something along those just.
Right. You know, Mel put together a huge thing about two or three years ago about that. I think she added like 2.1 million to redo this back area, so she would have information that current, but.
Who's that?
Mel, your cousin.
Still thinking we can use this space out front here.
That one to Level was crazy expensive because it is.
Well, they should just practice uphill all the time. Play on Level, it's easier. Exactly, instead of putting weights on you.
Yeah. Moving from turf to grass, that's a big, big difference.
See, practicing uphill on grass, flat turf. It's like going to Colorado.
Find nails and glass in the dirt sometimes, you know.
I thought you were gonna say you're faster on turf.
You are. It's a lot. It's no you.
Still the same.
Yeah, turf doesn't really change that for me.
Lighter shoes, come on.
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement that we can continue the conversation and have them at least go out and give us some abstract plans of some kind, that and forth.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
She might want to spearhead. Be nice to utilize that.
Stadium seating.
Okay, moving on, possibility of installing a well on our property.
Okay, that one's me. I don't want anyone to think I'm crazy. I just have an idea that I at least want to run by you. And I'm not sure if I go to the city first and then bring it back to you for discussion, or if I discuss it here first and let you know what I'm doing. But on December 5th, I will be attending the Public Works meeting. I am going to at least propose us digging a well. I don't know how far I'll get with that, but digging a well is about $30,000. We are now in a new, the irrigation rates are six times the rate of the regular city water and all of you that live in town know that. We don't get any special rates because we're a school district. And so to save the taxpayers' money, just to even do the fields in the back and the front of the building and some of those things, not even including the new soccer field that we've added. It's just the expense of it has gotten so high that I would like to at least have the option to look in to doing a well. They may say no, because they've said no to anyone else in the city that wants to do it, but because it's a public school, I'm hoping that they can see my reasoning for it. We did look into some, you know, gray water. We've looked into those type of things. Most schools stay away from that. And that's just reusing some sewer water and stuff like that, and we just don't want to go those those options. But I have put together a pretty good presentation that if you want to come see it, you can. If I get the go ahead at Public Works, I will go the next Tuesday on 12/13 and I will present it to the city council. I really think this is a good option for our district and I hope that they see it as well. The other option that I'm actually kind of considering bringing to you is, even though I was kind of hesitant on Chawinka's house, I met with them again. We actually could buy their home, tap into their well, and then resell the home. I would rather not go that route. We're not in the real estate business and I've learned really quickly, I don't love real estate, so I don't want to go that route. But that's gonna be kind of a backup plan as well. But when we're looking at close to, you know, 40, 50, and sometimes $60,000, we may get to a point where we need to say no summer athletics. And that's not the school, but that would be saying that to Jake. That would be saying it to Little League and some of these other sports that use our fields. We have to have a way to fund that. And so if we could build a well for $30,000 and use that for only irrigation, just so you know, state law, we cannot use a well for our water in the school, but we can use it for irrigation. So I just want to let you know that I'm doing that. It obviously would come back to you before we move on anything. Even if it ran through Public Works and ran through City Council with flying colors, I still would come back to you because that would be an expenditure. But down the road, just an absolute cost savings, so I'm hopeful that they see it our way.
Payback would be essentially a year then.
Yes, we pay back in one year, one season.
Is it really feasible for us to have a well here? Have you checked on locale and hoops to jump through in general?
I have, and we do.
Well, you wouldn't have to worry about getting clean water even for the test, would you?
We don't, but I see where he's coming up with. We did have all that done though. The one hurdle that we run into is this land is just solid rock. You really run into some of that. So we'd have to do a test to see, you know, to make sure it's really around the $30,000 mark, but that was the biggest hurdle that we encountered.
Can we tap the river? Well, Ski Village does it for their snowmaking.
So there's an underground spring or something around here that you can tap into or what?
You don't have to go all the way down to the Jordan, but they're.
Yeah, just go in Aquifer.
Yeah, I just wonder.
Right now, I think out at the golf course on the other side, at 100 feet, they're hitting good water actually, which they were not able to before. They were going to the Jordan being at 300 feet, so the wells have gotten shallower. It will just cost more money through the bedrock. As I say, you just gotta play earth more.
The location would be back by our holding pond that's already back there, so it's a really, really good location anyway. It doesn't ruin any of Jake's beautiful fields that he already has and things like that. They don't have to work around a well or anything, so. I just want to let you know I'm doing this. I'll bring it back and see how receptive they are. They, you know, the downfall in the, in the defense of the city council, they may not want another well because it's one more well that could get contaminated in the city. And they have their reasons why they don't want any more wells, but the chances of that happening are so slim that I hope they see, that this is just a savings for the taxpayers.
Have they discussed, have you discussed it with them at all, even on a baseline level?
Yes, we met with, Dave and I went up and met with Tom Bergerson, Ann Efton, would she be auto? Yes. Yep.
That's my cousin.
Oh, there you go, your cousin. We had a really nice meeting. You know, they're not gonna, they're not the Public Works committee. But we had some pre-conversation and they know where we'd want to put it and we had some of that pre-talk so that I know what I'm talking about when I go in to present, so. Just wanted to let you know I'm doing that.
That'd be a great idea.
Thanks. See what we can do.
Okay, moving on, staff development stipends.
You ready for this one?
Yeah, but you got the answers.
I do have the answer. At the last meeting, Rob had brought up the conversation about staff members getting stipends for staff development, things like that. It was a great, great question. We found out the answer. If someone is going to, I'm just gonna read it from Bill Cow from MSBA. Expenditures for staff development must be made in accordance of the Advisory Staff Development Committee, which we have Brenda that sits on that committee. And they're accepted annually in the action of the school board. However, this takes, oh, then he just says that how staff development dollars can be used. What Bill is basically saying is you don't have to approve a stipend because you have a board member that sits on that committee. So there's our answer to that.
That's their money and they can divvy it up.
Right, right. It was just, you know, most stipends I grant to you. Rob had just said, what about staff development? We never bring those here. And that's the answer from MSBA. Right, right. So now we know.
Moving on, donation.
Okay, I have one that's added and we kind of caught it last minute. Laurie called me at the conference and kind of brought something to my attention. We have baseball uniforms that were used from 2005 to 2012. They're pinstriped and they had sewing on bombers where you sew on the. I'm gonna use all the wrong baseball words here. You can correct me. Nonetheless, they used them for their term. They weren't the best uniforms. They were kind of falling apart, but they used them before they could get their next ones. They have a pinstripe to them, so to reuse them even for a younger class or a younger grade, you would have to buy pinstripe pants, which actually end up being really, really expensive. It's cheaper to get a plain white or a plain red uniform and have the guys wear their own white pants. With that, our baseball coach did a really nice, good thing in a good gesture. He donated these old uniforms that truthfully, he thought were gonna go in the trash. He donated them to a local organization in Nicaragua. We really like that he did that, but our policy and our procedure is to bring anything we're gonna give away, we should try to post that and try to get some money for it. These, there was no value in these. We, I don't think could have sold, you know, sold these. No pants, no other equipment went with them. It was just these shirts. So I just wanted you to be aware that this donation occurred. If you want any other action to happen, I can do that. I think this is an example of someone just doing some really good, good deed with something that's going to go to a good cause. So if you remember Daniel Ben, he would have been a Cannon Falls graduate. He was down there working with these students and really kind of dedicating his life and service overseas. And, and reached out to his former coach and said, hey, you got any old uniforms? And these were literally on their way to disposal because they're, they're in pretty rough shape. But they have seam strips down there and they're kind of restitching the bombers back on, so we now have a bombers team in Nicaragua, which I think is kind of cool. But there is gonna be some articles and things on it in the paper because we're very proud of a former grad going down and doing these things. I wanted you to know that it happened, so.
That's good. It gets some use out of it.
He had a nasty curveball.
Daniel did?
Yes, he did. Anything else? We don't need to vote on that, which is more FYI.
More informative, yeah.
Rob, we have time.
Okay. This is, and I thought this would be a good time to bring up because there's nothing that's pertinent to it right now. We've had in the past, coach or board members have applied for positions within a school district. Then in the last case, we had the school board member resign upon being hired. But taking that to the other direction would be, how would it, and I guess the reason that happened. If I understand correctly, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is we didn't want a board member to be a coach reporting to the AD conflict of interest, kind of a circular thing, correct?
You'd be a subordinate and.
Right. So the other side of that is, if you applied for the position but didn't get it, how would a board member feel having interviewed with a subordinate, didn't get the position? Could that have put the AD or someone in a position of feeling more obligated to hire because of their status when they interviewed? So I talked to Jake, just kind of, what do you think of this? And he made it that it was a concern that a board member applying for a position could, and I'm not saying he did, but could make him feel uncomfortable if he goes, I don't want to hire you. But now he turns around and he's still the board member. So my thoughts were, and it'd be more of a policy at this board if we want to, again, this is just a discussion. Do we restrict active board members from applying to positions?
I think you can.
I think you can do whatever, if you set it up as a policy and you're on board. I think this school board at one time or school board association says anything $5,000 or less. $8,000? That they can, but you can write a policy if it's something where you think as a board it'd be a conflict of interest.
Well, I think you just, you just hit the biggest point. Well, I think you just, you just hit the biggest point, conflict of interest. Um, Ms. Lochner is here, and you're going to be a future board member, she subs for us occasionally as a para and in the kitchen, um, we need her. And, and that's an important thing, but it's so removed that there's not a conflict of interest. We're not her direct supervisor, it's three people deep, um, before that would be, um, a conflict of interest. So I think you just said the right words, it's hard when it's that direct, direct person, or a head coach, um, or a teacher, uh, I wouldn't be a teacher, but a head coach is a really tough one.
Well, can I speak from personal?
Yeah, you, you have a good, you have a very good example.
Yeah. I applied for a, uh, would it be a management position?
Mm-hmm.
In the district, I don't think me sitting on the board had any, any real persuasion on getting it or not getting it. I didn't get it, I stayed here, there was no hard feelings, they hired the best candidate that was out there. So my personal opinion is, I, I don't, I wouldn't wanna see a policy, because if there are opportunities for somebody on the board that could come up, um, given the opportunity to at least apply for it, I guess.
I get nervous.
Personally speaking, yeah, it's, it would be a little bit different if I got the job, working, working for the, with the administration. Then I guess I'd be working with the administration on a different side though.
Right.
But I guess that'd be my own.
I think your position, Jerry, if you would've gotten it though, you wouldn't have been able to because you've been paid more.
No, right, you know what I'm saying.
And I'm not doing it to, I didn't wanna bring it up and make it feel like there's a, a specific person, because you were the great example of, hey, it wasn't a big deal. I guess I'm looking at more of a, again, a procedural thing to say, three years down the road, new board members completely. Uh, what happens if, or do we create the policy now where you say, you know what? If we get in the front end of it, we don't have to worry about this happening, where you get that situation where there's a new board member and they, they apply for a position, and now we've got some, some odd feelings or pressures that didn't exist before. So that's why I was discussing it now, where we didn't have that, and I'm hoping we never had that. But at the same point, I guess I felt the reason that they had to resign from the board is because it could be odd. But then I thought, well, if they don't get the position, it could still be odd, and they'd still be a board member. So I thought it was odd either way it went, or it could be, not that it was, but it could be. So, and I know you're a good example, cause I, you're the first one, I thought, I'm like, well, in the past, it's worked great, but we don't know who's gonna be on the board in the future.
I know if you look at, and I, I kinda agree with what you're saying, Rob, is like when Josh stepped down, I appreciate that he did, because it, it does create problems at that level as a board member and a coach, if there were something that was going on. There's gotta be some sort of, you know, favoritism in some way, even though you try and separate those ideas and your ideologies and what your feelings are for sports in general, but there does impose some issues that might make it difficult, so, yeah, I can see that.
So your, your request would be come up with a policy, if you are on a school board and you applied and received the position?
To apply.
You'd have to step down before you even interview.
So it's, when you're interviewing, it's, it's equal across the board as interviews?
I, I, I personally.
That would be difficult, just to throw your hat in the ring that you have to resign.
But the other side of it, the administration.
Here, let me, let me throw you a, a hypothetical. So, I don't, I don't, maybe I shouldn't. Say there's a individual in town who is a financial advisor who decides to run for the school board. And say, for whatever reason, we lose our head baseball coach, and he decides that he'd like to apply for that position. Um, so you would say somebody like that should resign off the school board before he even applied for the position? See, and I would disagree with that.
See, I'm just saying it because i- in circumstances that could be, is there pressure on the A D or pressure on the interview panel to hire a board member, regardless of everything else? They're a board member, maybe, maybe they're loud like me, and I wanna get hired, you know, I, I, I'm actually trying to protect the administration from, from a what if.
Right.
That's all it really is. Now, then the other side of that coin is, you have a head coach who wants to apply to be a board member. We can't not let them apply, but that's the cart and then the horse, so that...
How do you feel about, um, let's say, and Kurt, I think you've helped us out, maybe take tickets at the door? Or say you're a ref or an umpire for something, um, or any of those kinds of things, you're still working for Canifell's schools, but you're a board member. How do you feel about those kind of, uh, those, those positions that are really removed from administration? I mean, whether you get paid to take tickets or not, um, those kinds of things, how, you know, if you're announcing a game, for example, is that a conflict in your eyes?
Refing a game, no, I don't.
Okay.
Cause it's.
So you're talking about kind of high level positions?
A main position where you are expected to lead something.
So the only example you could probably think of would be coaching, head coach is about the only thing that would count to this.
That would fit, unless there's another position like that.
Never under ten thousand or eight thousand.
That's gonna be under ten thousand dollars, yeah. Otherwise, yeah, as far as, you know, volunteering, or there's a rotation, you've got twenty people and we use two at a time, you'll just be in that rotation, so that, that to me isn't, or additional help substitute teaching, where again, it's on a call basis. It's not where I should always be the first one called, I want the call, you know, it's, you know what I mean?
So what I, and what I'm hearing you say is head coaching would probably be the only instance that we could think of that would fall under these parameters that you're referencing.
Yeah, cause we don't even do assistant coaches, do we, that's by the coaches, yeah.
You know, it, it hasn't come up that often, I think both Jake and Beth kind of researched where it happened within our conference and how many times it came up. I think we got a principal maybe over in Lake City.
It's very minimal.
Yeah, so, you know, the, I think there's a, a difference between a board member and the principal, and for life me, I don't know how, but it doesn't, it doesn't come up, does it?
No, I asked the question, the, the, each of you, A Ds who had had that happen, and nobody said that it happened to them, they'd said, good luck with that. And they said, so, they all agreed, it does kind of put you in the spot.
And you know, we had a recent, I don't think she'll mind if I use her as an example, but Jen Shapiro was actually looking at the seventh grade basketball position. And we felt that she could possibly apply because she and Jake were, were equals, and they were both okay with it. Um, she just opted not to do that, but I think that's an example of maybe the exception, but that doesn't even fall under what you're talking about.
Really, it's just the board level, cause everything else would be administrative level, how you guys would decide who can and can't.
I think whenever you, go ahead.
What the MSBA policy is the eight thousand, is that our policy?
That MSBA, that's the recommended.
I just, I just feel like there's consequences that we couldn't comprehend right now, that may occur if we lock ourselves into a policy. And since it's happened one time during, well, maybe even one time during my whole tenure, I respect what you're saying, but I just don't know if we should lock ourselves into something. And if we continue to treat it in a case by case, we may have to deal with something like Josh's, Josh's resignation, but it just doesn't seem to happen a lot.
I wonder if that's the reason why too, Bob, because there may be that, that untalked about reason as to, I'm not gonna do this because of conflict of interest, you know? So whether or not you put it in a policy, maybe something to think about and maybe do it, but maybe that's why you don't see it so much is because there's that underlining feeling that we just don't cross that line too, I don't know, because Jake said you don't see it that much at all, you know?
If you had a passion to be the wrestling coach, if something would occur, I just think the way that that would play out is you would, you would seek advice and you would, uh, talk to others, and potentially you'd be looking into that where everyone would know, so, you know?
I, I, well, my, my feeling is, yeah, I, I probably would, and that's just me, because of, I just don't think, my, my position right now is here. And, and I, if I ever got into some sort of, you know, discussion about sports in general, I would have a hard time, you know? The coaches, I'd be trying to be with the coaches in some way, and as I've gotten the responsibility as a board member, and there could be a conflict of interest there, and it'd be, it'd be tough.
I don't, I, I'm certain that the only reason Josh applied for it was because it was a great opportunity for him in the situation.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the one thing I do like is it's not a one-on-one interview. So Jake would specifically feel like he's, I really feel like I gotta hire this guy because he's on the board, right? He's got a number of people that sit in and interview those candidates. And I don't think there's, I don't know who we, y'all have in interviews, and it really doesn't matter to me, but I'm gonna say there's one or two people that aren't intimidated by anybody that sits on this board, that they really feel they should hire that person because they're on the board or not.
Okay, it was, I asked him, they said bring it to the board, so I.
Good discussion, it's a good discussion, actually.
Well, I think a person too has to make a decision before they even apply for a position that's over eight thousand, whether they would accept it and be willing to resign or not, before they would even apply. And Josh Payne had made it already decided.
I, I think it's a tough call if you're asked to resign even while you're applying for the position. I understand once you get the position, but just to apply for a position, to be asked to resign off the board, I don't think it's, I personally think it's a no.
Just so you know, you won't get anywhere with that, you can't make sense of do that, so.
No.
Okay. Good, good talk. Okay, moving on, informational items, you can see what's gonna happen at the next, our next regular board meeting at six P M. November twenty eighth. Um, you see our presenters, Jeff Sealy's come in, Schoolology, Schoolology. All right.
Schoolology.
Yeah, you've said it a hundred times a week, I don't, that thing with the "ology" at the end. Um, Sealy will be here to be talking about a ref for refunding opportunities, uh, more update on West Edel's sale with a little lock that'll be done. And, uh, anything else, informational, news reports, board members wanna include, contact Lori or Beth.
Remember to mark your calendars, cause December's just one meeting.
December. What day?
December twelfth.
Okay, I think we are finished for the evening, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
How many motions?
Kurt has made the motion second.
I'll second.
By Jerry, any other discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, we are finished.